Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the March thirteenth meeting?
Yes.
Any objections, corrections, changes?
No.
None. All right, hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to appoint.
Yeah, well, thank you, I was just thinking the same thing.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we'll take a minute to appoint both Cheryl and Anthony as full voting members for the evening. So we'll have a quorum and be covered. And moving right along, we'll move to item two, the ZBA recommendations for section A, 221 South Main Street.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Seven River Street LLC. Here with me this evening is Warren Kelly, the principal in connection with that particular property. I think everybody's absolutely familiar since it's now the new Starbucks location in town. So what we're planning to do, or what Mr. Kelly would like to do, is continue the development of that particular parcel of land. Last time we were here before you, we had actually had, we had proposed to have that front building, which is about, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, and then have in the back of the building, if you remember, a storage yard. Do you mind just flipping to the layout plan? I brought my own pointer today.
Let's see, existing?
It could be dangerous, don't look too close.
Existing or proposed?
Existing, perfect. So as you can see, here's the existing building. It's fully tenanted now. Obviously Starbucks is at one end, Solbean is at another end, there's a fitness place in there, Middleton House of Pizza, I guess I'm plugging everybody, Salem Five, there we go, I think I plugged everyone that's there. So that's what's currently located in the building. Now, what Mr. Kelly had planned on doing was actually having a satellite office for Bayett Marine located in one of the units. And then to have the back area be accessory boat storage, which was permitted a couple of years ago. Now, what Mr. Kelly is proposing to do, can we just fast forward to the proposed conditions? He is actually proposing to not use that entire rear portion as boat storage, but to actually put in, oh my, now this isn't working, Katrina, put in a new building, it's about fourteen thousand square feet, it actually has the possibility of five units of retail, five units of some sort of contractor bays, and that's what you see here. And then in addition, he is seeking to be able to use this rear portion possibly as accessory storage with regard to the people who may be taking space in this building. It's just it's very common nowadays because nobody really has any place to put their businesses, you really can't operate home businesses when you have any type of materials or equipment. So people are actually going out and seeking these contractor bays. And I'd say eighty percent of the time, they really do need some type of outdoor storage, which is why you're seeing a lot of that in the car.
There's one right over the line in North Andover?
Yes.
Right before the Girl Scouts.
Yes, there is. And we permitted that. That was Scott Arnett. Yep, literally right on the line.
Minicucci?
Oh, no, right before Minicucci's, yep. Yep. So anyhow, so that's what Mr. Kelly is proposing to do. In the current configuration, he continues to meet all dimensional and all density requirements relative to land. He complies with the open space requirement, he exceeds the parking requirement, and in fact, he's adding thirty-nine new spaces. And this particular type of use that he's proposing in the back building will not occupy thirty-nine spaces. It's required to have so many spaces because every individual retail store needs five parking spaces, so just for the five, he needed to provide an extra twenty-five spaces, which it'll never, I mean, literally, it'll never take up that kind of space. So there's a lot of, if you will, excess parking that will in fact be able to, and available for this particular building as well. Based on the fact that the boat storage does have a special permit, and we permitted that from the front building, the type of relief I'm seeking is a modification to that permit so that I can actually move the special permit because it goes with the land, but specific. So it went with that building, I had to move it to the back building. So that's what one of the requests are for the Board of Appeals. And then the second special permit that we're requesting is actually to be able to have contractor offices and outdoor storage. So in Middleton, whether you're in the business district or you're in the industrial district, you have to get a special permit for contractor yards and for contractor businesses. So we are requesting that.
Jill, the butts R. One A.
It doesn't really, it's for, can we go to the locust plant? I mean, it is more than thirty-five feet away, though. Yeah. So can you make it bigger? So here's Warren's property. This is the property that actually, butts R. One A, not Warren's. So here's the actual limits of Rivers' property.
So the new building being proposed is within those lines?
It's right here.
Okay.
Yeah. This is, oh, remember? You'll remember it. Remember that property we came in with, the guy who owns Airtight?
Yes.
That's the one. So that, yeah.
That's what's back there.
It used to be prescription turf and Airtight, that's here.
Okay.
Yeah. So he doesn't actually buy.
But doesn't directly buy the Airtight.
Katrina's comment, I think, about the access here.
Yeah.
So the planning board voted on a recommendation of the zoning board about an easement which had sort of been occluded, and we said, well, if you re-dedicate that, there were just your deeds. And that, the zoning board apparently came back on a negative, and the only reason I'm asking this question is because it's in our notes.
Yeah, that's actually a very, very good point. So after everybody did all this, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Richardson, Ian, Mr. Thornton, and I can't remember the other guy's name, Jeremy something, who all owned those three parcels, one, two, three, all got together and actually entered into a new easement agreement. So they actually formed something. So Runlet Way is truly now a D to G.
So the easement's been done because we didn't want to see the eyesore.
Exactly.
Sort of like we have almost, right before you get out of Middleton, there's no sidewalk in front of the subway, right?
Oh geez, when you go on the water again.
And that's what I think we were trying to avoid, like, two lots right before you leave Middleton, this sort of, and eyesore where there's no sidewalk, there's a couple bushes there.
Can you actually go to the landscape plan? Because that's where it shows it. It really worked out well. So what the proposal is between those three parties is to actually develop Runlet as a really, it is not a roadway, it is a private way. So, oh, it doesn't show on it, I thought it did. Maybe on the layout plan, is that one of the plans? Here we go, this is perfect, thank you, Katrina.
Let me zoom.
So we're keeping the curbing and there's no problem with the access, right?
None.
And people aren't disputing that anymore and there's no problem?
Nope, and that's the beauty of it.
Right.
So now they have the, if you will, tri-party agreement where all three of them have the right to use it. And what's going to end up happening is, you know, right now, Mr. Kelly's, the main traffic that comes through would be for, you know, Starbucks, come in Runlet, take a left. And when the Richardsons eventually develop this land that's over here, then they will come in and actually improve this way, which is the agreement between the parties, that entity will improve it when they develop this backland.
Is it going to stay private?
Exact, it'll always be private, it is not a subdivision roadway. That, everybody, you know, the private way, it's really a right-of-way. It's not, it has never been a street. So that's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up because it hadn't been something we had ever brought up to this board about how they did actually formalize that easement.
Right, right, but that was in, Katrina, did you put that in? So I was a little confused.
Yes, well, the ZBA's denial.
It's obviously relevant, but I'm trying to.
Right, and so what I was trying to say is that's why you're seeing them move the parking back in off the easement. However, it isn't exactly where it was originally permitted, so they need a modification to move it back in a different location. And there's different landscaping choices, the crosshatched areas used to be landscaped and now they're just painted pavement. Some of them are, some of them are.
There's extra parking in the back, too, that used to be a big grass strip.
See, this one is still, if you blow it up, it's, I asked them to make it really different, the engineer, and they did. So one is like, if you will, staccato lines, so every once in a while, they'll miss a part of the striped, you can see it better on your plan.
You know, I think I zoomed in on it.
It's really, yeah, so.
Yeah, those are proposed to be painted.
Ooh, I almost stopped. Yeah, I'm going to show you.
And that's fine, though, I mean, even if it was painted, it's just a change.
It's so hard for me to even, if I had a hard time telling, I can only imagine, because that's not, for some reason, when we do the PDFs up, you can't really tell. So I'm just going to show you like this. Can you see if I do that?
Jill, if I could ask it, it was taking me an enormously long time to try and show to the ZBA what has changed in the proposed plan from what they originally proposed. So we, I did a comparison between what you're proposing today and what's on the ground, but we don't have a comparison on what was originally proposed and what you're proposing now. So how did those two things differ? I think the ZBA will be interested in that.
Like, the changes truly?
Like, they don't care what's on the ground, they just care what the modification request is for from what the original.
Right, but it's so mine, I mean, it like is literally moving those couple of spaces and then adding and moving around some parking.
This was all grass, though, back here, right?
Right, well, that's my point, the entire back lot's being redeveloped, everything.
Well, no, this row of parking was a grass strip with a fence before.
It's only because it was adjacent that everything's being changed back there, from where the parking line was, all the way back, it's all changed.
Yeah.
I mean, it, basically, if you almost think of this as two separate lots, the first lot was developed, the second lot is being developed, I mean, that's, the big change is all of that. And then the four parking spaces, it was three at one point, got pushed, then came back in, and that really is the only.
So they're not, so they're not two separate lots, it's one lot still?
No, it's just one lot, yeah.
And this is going to be for boat storage and contracting, is that why there's a fence here? Is there any way this can be a shared parking lot so that there's?
It is shared, it's just that in order to actually make it usable, you need to put berm between the, you know, between the parking spaces, they're all usable.
Isn't that a fence?
No. It used to be a fence.
I see, so the spaces on the right side there are really for the other building?
Yeah.
And this berm in between to sort of differentiate between the two?
Yeah, but there's no fence between that, that.
Are you going to be able to drive right through it?
You drive right through it.
Just a middle row parking.
Oh, I thought there was a berm there, it's just heavily striped.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know why Katrina has a dark line, but it was never intended not to be free-flowing between the two. But I wanted to show you, so, it's really, you see how these spaces, this is all staccato looking? That's, those, that's what's landscaped, and the ones that have a solid line are not. So that's staccato, that's a solid, there's very few solids that are painted, this is painted, this is painted, I mean, some of them are painted because they're too small to plant, but it's very.
It looks like it's handicap parking is probably what it is for like a van.
This is handicapped here, yeah, and you have, you have to have a, because you have to be able to open up the door and you have to be able to let the wheelchairs out and roll.
Yep.
So, but there are, what do I keep? Oh.
You mentioned outdoor storage, what sort of outdoor storage is contemplated?
We don't know, whatever they would actually put in, traditional stuff, like some kind of equipment, materials maybe, but predominantly boats, just like it was before.
If somebody wants to store.
Yeah, and it's in.
If somebody wants to store old truck tires, is that going to end up there? Is that going to be a permissible use?
So, yeah, and I would ask that it be designated where the storage is because I would think that. I already did that on the plan, it's pretty clearly marked, it's back behind the building. That's what I had showed you at first, if you.
Behind, the outdoor storage is behind the building.
Yeah, it's behind the building and encased, and it's located behind a fence, and it's adjacent to Thornton's lot. So you're permitted to basically put anything those contractors would have there, you know, old tires are not typically stored anywhere. Large heavy equipment.
Yeah, but, yeah, all right, but I'm just using.
That's an example?
I find most defensive, you know?
It could, I mean, it's a very small area, so it's not going to be anything, that material, plus the way you get in and out of the buildings, if you will, I'll show you, the way you get in and out of the contractor base is actually, do you have that picture too, Katrina? I don't remember if I had.
The elevations?
The elevations? Yeah, I think I didn't have this pretty one yet.
Jill, what about large heavy equipment, would they be permitted to bring any size vehicle they wanted with regards to construction vehicles?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's, honestly, that's the way it is all over, you have, that's why you have to get the special permit, that's why you're required to put the fencing up, and that's why it's only allowed in the M. One in the business district, you wouldn't allow it anywhere else, and they require the fencing.
I mean, this is the most appropriate place for it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and it was always going to be for boat storage, oh, there you go, so now it's even a better view. So the rear, where you see, where you see this car, yeah, where you see, I don't know why, where you see that.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'm getting frustrated with mine. Where you see the boat, this is the storage area, it's only, it's six thousand square feet behind the building, that mitigates really what my concern was. I thought you were talking about storing it between, in between Starbucks. Oh, no, 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 that would, you honestly, I can't imagine Starbucks would be happy about that, so, no.
Right.
It's behind this building.
So you have overhead doors on the rear?
Exactly.
It's a good place for it.
It is, it really is, it's very, it's a good place, it makes sense, and it allows.
It's a good place with this building.
Yeah, it is, it's a nice building.
Fantastic, but is it going to match sort of the?
It is, yeah, it'll be a very similar architectural design, so, you know, the way Warren has done it is it's still the same colors, and it's a very streamlined look, I mean, you know what the front of Starbucks looks like, it's a little more, it doesn't have as much dimension, doesn't have those, the, it's not a big, what are those things called, the
towers?
Belfry things, you know how they, the towers, it doesn't have that, but it has a very similar look, I mean, I thought it actually looked pretty nice, especially for a contractor building.
I think the plans do show a curb between those two rows of parking.
I thought it did too, honestly, I thought it was a curb.
That'd be an error, though.
Yeah, I guess it would just make more sense if they could, the overflow could, you know, use that.
It's designed for overflow, so I don't know why the curbs are.
I mean, the curb doesn't stop you from going in and out, the parking lot, you can circumnavigate the, all the parking lot.
One thing I did see when I went out there, I took some pictures out there, is that the front, where the rain is supposed to sheet into that front area on 114, the cars are just driving onto the grass there and leaving big tire holes in the grass. Are you going to be putting curb stones there or something to stop the car?
What are you talking about on the side?
It's, it's in the front right here.
Oh, people are just crazy.
Yeah, they're just driving onto the grass.
It's probably any curb stops.
Okay, so you just haven't put curb stops.
He hasn't done any curb stops, yeah.
People driving on the grass, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, listen, I had somebody.
They want to allow curb stops because they want the water to shed.
Oh, they want it to sheet, so maybe you're going to have to put some sort of.
So people just got to learn how to drive, they actually pass and drive on the lawn, which, that's crazy.
Yeah.
But you can't put curb stops because they want the water to run into that rain ditch or whatever.
So it's a complete sheet flow? Okay, so you can't put curb stops? So who knows how they're going to eventually elect to do something because you can't allow it to happen. But I have curb stops and people drove up and down my hill all the time. You should see what they do, they come up the side.
You just have a curb stop with slots.
If you have a curb, do you know what a curb stop is? It's a big, huge.
Concrete?
Yeah, that you put rebar in and you, I mean, I suppose you could, what did you do, bore holes in the bottom so it could flow? But you still impede flow, and then you redirect. I think that would, I mean, I don't, I'm no engineer, but I think that would work.
It's a small problem.
Yeah, so I, oh. Warren now knows about it, you should go look.
Yeah, I don't want to tell you how people drive across lawns and.
Well, you know what, it could have happened when the snow was there and you can't even see where the parking lot was, and maybe they plowed a little too far and cars pulled in and then their tires sank into the grass.
Yeah, now that everything's thawed, everybody would clean everything up, I'm sure, so.
Yeah.
I prefer curb stops, they just won't let me put them in.
Right.
Any additional?
So that basically is this particular project, so what we're looking for this evening, if it's, you know, if the board would like to do so, is we're asking for a positive recommendation to go before the Board of Appeals for the modification of the site plan, the modification of the special permit for the boat, boat storage and boat sales, and a special permit to allow the contractor businesses and outdoor storage in that one particular area, because what we're really doing is modifying that to be smaller.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
All right, well, entertaining motions to make a recommendation.
Second?
No, you're going to make the motion.
I'll make the motion for a recommendation to the ZBA.
Positive or negative?
Positive.
A positive recommendation, so we have a motion on the floor for a positive recommendation to the ZBA for the 221 South Main Street modification to the site plan approval, modification to the special permit granted by the ZBA in seventeen, and for a new special permit to allow contracting, landscape business, and equipment storage in a new building to be built behind the newly-built commercial building. Is that your motion?
It is.
Okay. Do you get all that?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Amy's good.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's really nice, Warren, it's a nice building.
Thank you.
Perfect place for it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. And moving on to the second ZBA recommendation under B. Two Birch Road.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Two Birch Road LLC, the owner of the property located at Two Birch Road. This particular property is located behind the North Shore Business Center, behind where the North Shore Volk used to be, on your way to the Danvers Fishing Game, yes?
I know, I know it.
Log Bridge Road, are we talking?
Launigan, so where Launigan Road comes down around all the way to the back.
They go to Log Bridge, so it's not 114.
Not Log Bridge.
You're going up?
I mean, it is Log Bridge, what I say, it is Log Bridge, it's not Launigan.
You were throwing me off, I was saying it was Log Bridge.
I'm getting myself crazy.
I'm unusual up here.
No, it is Log Bridge.
Yeah, all right.
So Log Bridge comes around, cuts down, goes around, and then cuts back where the fishing game is. So it's right in that area.
Didn't we approve the auto, the auto repair shop?
There was a medical refrigeration facility.
That's inside.
All right, all right.
Yeah, this is the one where we came in for an auto repair shop. Yeah, so this was about five months ago, we came in for an auto repair shop, and that's going to be located in this area right here. But one of the conditions of that auto repair shop going in is that the building be brought up to code. So this particular building has had a very tainted past, right? So it's had a lot of issues, there has been a lot of issues with the building, issues with ownership not maintaining it, issues with it being damaged and then demolished and not rebuilt, and then also issues with just simply not being in compliance with any safety or access code requirements. So before Mr. Tully was able, or is able, to occupy and or complete his build-out, the ownership has to fix the building, and that includes doing something about these rear portions. So this rear portion right here, basically, here, 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 those two parts that stick out are going to be demolished. So the building used to have a portion right here, and it was, in about 2008, something happened, I think there was, was there lightning, and then it got a flood, and then there was a fight, everything happened to the building at once. And that one small part, which is about five thousand square feet, was demolished at the time, it had to be, it was destroyed. And these two pieces that are about ten thousand square feet total, maybe a little more, maybe twelve thousand square feet total, are going to be taken down. And in their place, they're going to put in about a fifteen thousand square foot building addition, I should say. The building itself is about fifty-eight thousand square feet, it sits on, you know, a hundred and forty thousand square foot lot. This, here we go, thank you, Katrina, it's a very odd-shaped lot. So basically, the building as it stands is actually undergoing renovations in what they call, I think, a Section 34 Code compliance. So you get an engineer or a structural person to go in, completely go through the building and identify the issues and then repair them, and that's going on now. What the new owners would like to do, they bought the building, I think in November, December, they want to make this a nice building. They plan on taking all of the areas around the building, repaving them, putting new landscaping where there should be landscaping, where it's just kind of unkept, and making it appear much, much nicer. So the way in which you access, you can see, look at the lot lines, right, it's how the heck do you get to the back of the property? You actually get to the back of the property over something called Bixby Avenue. So this particular right-of-way is called a street, and that's how it gets to the back of the property. In addition, there is a shared right-of-way that is shared between this property owner and the petitioner, and that's how they access this part of the building. And this particular property owner is, as I said, going to repave the areas. So first, this particular property is legally existing, non-conforming, as you can tell in many ways. So it doesn't meet any of the side setback requirements, it doesn't meet certain dimensional requirements, it doesn't meet many things. However, the particular addition where it is located is being located substantially within the footprint that is being taken down. So under Section 3.3.7, if you are going to relocate the addition in that specific location, you don't have to have a variance, you go to the Board of Appeals for a special permit. There is a portion, and it's very small, I don't even know if you can see it, see that right there, it's like twelve hundred square feet, if even, that is outside of the footprint. But under Section Three, you are permitted still to build in that particular area as long as you don't further encroach into the side setback, side setback that's being encroached on, and it does not, because there's the pinch point and there's where it goes. So it, and because the property line actually deviates away from each, from the property line, from the building line, it actually grows. So that's why that was permissible under special permit.
Two-story or one?
One. So it's going to be, all it's going to be is a metal building stuck on the back of that building, so there'll be bay doors behind, it is nothing fancy, that was included in your package, I mean, there's nothing to it, it's literally a metal wall, period.
Right, there's no residential sightlines into the area, it's, yeah, it's.
No.
Nobody, yeah, right, right.
I'm back there.
Right, right, I've been back there, there's nothing there.
No, and because this area, you know, he obviously, he, the owners obviously love to have outdoor storage, but where would you put it? So the one area they did it in is right here, and the reason is they've been asked by someone to actually have a little outdoor storage area, so they're going to fence in this tiny area, which is about six thousand square feet, not even, eighteen hundred square feet, it was really small, I wrote it in the application. And that's all they're going to have, and they're doing it because they did have some requests to actually have some outdoor storage. But they had to do it in a portion of the property that was not going to impede flow around the building, which is why it was located there, because the access, the way they get through is up into this area.
I guess for me, I would just like to know if there's anybody going to speak in opposition to it, I, you know, for me, that would seal it if there's nobody going to be, be here. Do you see me?
Yeah.
You know, so.
I mean, this area is.
That's just me personally, I don't know about the board.
This is heavily industrial.
Right, right.
I mean, this is our, for lack of a better term, this is our kind of.
It's our heavy industrial area.
Heavy industrial area, for lack of a better term, because we don't have one, it is our adult district, it is our marijuana district, it is every district.
That's why I spend so much time over there.
You can't, because you can't do anything.
There's nothing going over there but frogs, yeah.
I don't think what you haven't covered is the best thing about this is, is you're putting in the right kind of drainage. We don't know where the drains used to go. Some of those drains probably went straight to the Ipswich River, and they're correcting[1691.61] of those drains probably went straight to the Ipswich River, and they're correcting that.
Yeah. So basically, in order to do this building, we have to comply with stormwater management. And while we're allowed to sheet flow into, you know, adjacent properties, you're not ever allowed to go over ground from hot top, which is dirty, which is considered gray water. You're not allowed to go gray water into the Ipswich. So they're actually going to control it, and they have a stormwater management plan that they have to comply with, which will be a great relief.
As a result of doing this.
Oh, yeah. And it's so important because this is a very sensitive area because the
Not to make the proper drainage that they're going to need for automotive and all the things that go with that.
They have, yeah, so...
So theoretically, we're sort of cleaning up the area a little bit.
Yeah, no, the floor drains will go into its own tank.
Every, oh, if you're going to have an overhead door, and you don't have a bollard blocking access, you have to have a floor drain. And those will be put in because I know for a fact, most of them have never had it, because when Pat Tully was going to do it, he's putting them in. So, yeah, it does clean up the area. So that was a great point, Ms. Larry. Thank you. We are doing stormwater. Believe it or not, the septic system is okay, but we are doing a stormwater system. I mean, the building is only, it's not that old. It's from the eighties. I mean, I, it really isn't that old, but old enough. So that's what we're really trying to do. So this particular relief is site plan modification because there was an existing site plan approval. And in addition to that, it's a special permit under Section 3.3, which is the legally existing, nonconforming section, because the building clearly is legally existing, nonconforming, as well as that, you know, the new addition will simply replace that. And then we are seeking that outdoor storage and contractor special permit because we do have a very small section that will in fact be outdoor storage, and it's fenced in as well.
Do you know what they're going to store?
No, no. I mean, the traditional stuff, that probably, you know, somebody will have some form of equipment, and it'll be there. I mean, for the most part, like, you know, people always are concerned, oh, it's going to be really large pieces of equipment. If your equipment is stored somewhere, you're in trouble because you, how much do you charge for that a day? A thousand dollars a day? It's sitting somewhere, you're going bankrupt. That's not a good thing. So what most people do, that stuff is almost roving stock. You go from one job to a next job to a next job. So even if it did hit here, it better not be there for longer than a couple of days because it's too much, it's too much money loss.
And all the landscaping shown on the landscape plan is new, right? There's no landscaping.
Well, there, you know, there are areas of mulch. How's that?
Okay.
It's just...
Yeah, well, I'm looking.
Well, it is our First Amendment district, so you know, you do need the mulch in those areas.
Yeah. It's, I mean, but they are, they do want to clean it up. Look, the only way to attract good quality tenants is to have a good, attractive building to provide services, and that's what they're trying to do.
Yeah, it looks, it'll look better.
Oh, this is, this is such an improvement. And there are good businesses there now, though. I mean, Pat Tully will do well. Corvette Connection is there. Watson Brothers is there.
Yeah, well, in the fabric place.
There are a lot of businesses that actively operate under there. And, and because they bought this property, it is becoming code compliant, and that's with safety and access. That's a really important component that I know, you know, Lieutenant Kessel has wanted to have happen, and so has Chief Martin up for a long time.
Okay. Any other questions? Right. Seeing on, we'll entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the ZBA on 2 Birch.
Well, I move to vote to make a positive recommendation to the ZBA to raise and rebuild a portion of the building located at 2 Birch Road to use as a contracting and landscaping business and for equipment storage.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Anybody second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right. Moving to the last item on other business. Item A, a variance to allow a condominium complex, 59 South Main Street, Fairway Estates LLC. Just one quick note. I know there's folks here that are probably interested in this. It's not a public hearing. It's just an initial presentation, so we're not going to open it up to the public. That doesn't mean we're not going to have discussion about it, and I know there's going to be discussion plenty at the ZBA where they are holding a public hearing, so people will be able to be heard on it. So just wanted to make that point. So it is just a presentation tonight.
We can have discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, the reason why I'm here tonight, there is no recommendation. There is no approval process as far as the planning board is concerned. But the reason why I wanted to come before you is because the plan and the alternative will come before you because it'll be a subdivision plan, and then it'll be the special permit for the two families. This particular property has been a subject of much discussion many, many times. This is the only way to actually permit something that's for 55 and older that's actually practical is to use the use variance. These, this is how we've done Cranberry Commons. This is how we've done Peachy Circle. This is how we've done Riverview. This is how we've done Peachy Circle. All of them have been a use variance. All of them have had tremendous density bonuses, if you will. And part of the reason of that is because Middleton needs more housing for the elderly. We have no way to actually provide for that, and we would really benefit from having affordable housing for the elderly. Unfortunately, what DHCD in its inimitable wisdom decided was that you can't have age restricted condominiums anymore in a 55 and older. I mean, in a, and give it, or have it qualify for your, what is it called, Katrina? Your low-income housing?
Low-income housing stock?
Yeah. It won't qualify. So they don't any longer permit it. So what we were trying to do, I'm going to go through the yield plan, but I did want to show you what our proposal is. Of course, my secretary gave me seven copies of the same exact thing. So, yeah, all the same exact thing. That's nice. I think you were supposed to give those out to the board, probably. Probably, right? Okay. So behind you is what the actual proposal, our initial concept is. So if you look behind you, it's 66 units. It is actually, all of these units are the affordable. The reason why we put them all in the upfront area is the thought would be to find a not-for-profit group, like, I think it's called Horizon is one of them. Habitat, Habitat is one of them. There are many, many groups that you can actually sell affordable homes to. In Middleton, we have two affordable locations. One is at Orchard Circle, and one is at Memorial Drive. Memorial Drive is not age restricted, and our, our affordable, if you will, senior housing is Orchard Circle. We have, I think, 36 units there.
I wouldn't know.
We have a lot of units, which is wonderful, and they are always rented, and there is always a long waiting list. So our proposal is actually to create affordable units here and to be able to put them under the purview of the Middleton Housing Authority, if it'll be possible, so that they can be rented to Middleton residents. Because as you know, the Middleton Housing Authority and that particular group gives preference to Middleton residents and family members of Middleton residents. So that's what this particular section is. That's what those nine homes are for. The balance of the 57 homes are located throughout the property. This particular...
Probably not in our jurisdiction, but do you see any stigmatization of putting all those residents in the same corner?
Everybody, no. We have the New Orchard Circle. I don't find there to be a stigma, do you? I mean, that's just the way, I have no, I would love to sprinkle them throughout.
You know, I'm asking why that couldn't be done.
Because DHCD won't give us credit. It is an affordable housing unit, so Middleton, we need, we are so...
Barney Frank-type zoning sort of went out 30 years ago.
And I prefer it. I have tried. You go, you can't do it.
Putting people from certain economic groups in certain corners is usually a failure.
It isn't, it isn't when it's senior housing run by a community like the town. Orchard Circle is a tremendous success. So is Memorial Drive, and it is all subsidized housing. It is maintained by the community. It is Middleton, I mean, we get a lot of, Middleton Housing Authority gets a lot of money from the government, and that's why. So it's the same, it would be the same exact thing as Orchard. Again, I'd love to sprinkle them throughout. Katrina can tell you, DHCD will not permit it. Won't. I've tried to do it.
I don't think adults care, but I think it's tough on the kids sometimes.
This is only 55 and older, so would be no children.
Good point.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, is when I've tried it before, and I had an age restricted community, and I had deed riders, and I had six units I was supposed to put in, it was a 55 and older community, and DHCD says, well, you can't age restrict. I said, can you imagine going in, buying, and being in a 55, and wanting to be in a 55 and older community, and your next door neighbor has four kids? Doesn't fly. And it's an affordable. Then you talk about stigma, and now it's, there's a problem. And that is not a welcome problem.
You know, as long as they're nice units, there's no stigma. They should be happy to be living there. I mean, my husband grew up in a housing project in Malden, and he said it was a great upbringing.
I know her. And Lyndon. I knew her husband. So...
And I know Lyndon.
You know Lyndon. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyhow, so that is why, Mr. McGowan, it is a great question, and it is something that really does need to be thought about because you don't want to, you don't want to do that. You want to create something that's, that is desirable and that's beneficial, and that would be. And the other benefit is there are a lot of other seniors there. There'll be a lot of other groups, and hopefully there would be, you know, synergies. So our first stab at this was to actually design this particular property in this fashion. Obviously, if you're giving away, and you are giving it away, nine units of affordable housing, you have to be able to increase density to afford that. This particular property, can we go back to just what it can be developed as? I, and I apologize, because in your packets, in my petition, I say it's a 16-lot concept plan, and in your package, you got a 15-lot concept plan. That was my mistake. And the engineer gave me 15, and it was supposed to be 16. So this is the plan that I had sent back to Katrina, and that the Board of Appeals will have, and it'll go on record as well. It's just that this particular configuration shows that the property can be developed as 16 lots, and those lots are 40-plus thousand square feet. The property's about 24 acres. This is R1A. So the intent with not doing it as a traditional is that we just basically reduce the burden on the town. So this street would no longer be, if we do a traditional subdivision, this street will be a public way, and we'll deed it to the town. If it isn't, and we keep it as the 55 and older, just like Peachy Circle, just like Riverview, just like Cobblestone, just like, I shouldn't say it, North Meadows, it'll all be private in perpetuity.
So these are townhouse style?
Oh, yeah. There's, it's not apartments. I did not, they're townhouse style. They're just like, exactly like what happened in North Meadows, so where you have, I guess you call them townhouses, right? No matter how many units are in them. So they're only single units, top and bottom. Nobody lives on top of one another. Yes.
Yeah, so it's like two floors side by side.
Exactly. Yeah, because that's a differentiation between townhouse and multifamily. Multifamily can be on top, yes, stacking, yes, stacking living. Townhouses cannot be there side by sides. So under this particular configuration, this, this particular subdivision would be a subdivision of two-family homes. It would, they would, every single lot would have a duplex on it.
By special permit and with subdivision approval.
Yes, yeah. Which, by the way, when you do a two-family special permit, it's essentially if you show double the acreage and sufficient frontage and all the setbacks, that's, that's been, well, that's been our tradition to be pretty hard pressed to all of a sudden discriminate. So that's what the rule is, and it always has been. So that's with the two-family. It would be, but it would have to come before the town, before you as a subdivision. And that's why originally Katrina said, you know, you really don't go before the planning board for variance, but I didn't think it was fair or appropriate to bring something to the Board of Appeals that I didn't show you first, especially since it does impact you in this way. I mean, I'm not asking for a recommendation. You don't have to take any action at all, but again, I thought you should know about it before I did it.
What's the status in front of Concom?
Oh, we haven't even started yet. We are far away from Concom. So in terms of, you know, when we'll get our, even go before them. But this is the Concom line, and we can keep our 25 feet without a problem, and we will do that. This is a very small, this is a very large scale. You're looking, these, this is a very large scale, but this is approximate location wetland. We don't even have a, we don't have the ENRAD yet. We haven't even filed an ENRAD or gotten an ORAD for it yet. I think I tried to. I was starting the process, but I didn't finish it. And I don't think Ray ended up doing it.
So how many units here?
Oh, I didn't see it. I looked before.
This is, you have to introduce. Ray Falidi, Nine Broadway, Wakefield, Mass. Home leave Middleton. The ENRAD is done.
It is done. Okay, I did file it.
It is approved.
So that is the wetland.
It has been for two years at least.
Okay.
Yes, that is the wetland line.
All right, so that is the wetland line. But we have not gone for a notice of intent. We don't know where any of the structures are going to be, so I really can't file yet. So the first, just so you know what my process is for this, I would always ask for use variance first. If I, if I, if I'm able to secure use variance from the board, then we go forward on that other plan, you know? And there'll be modifications. They're going to tell me I need to do things, don't do things, whatever. But I have no structures yet to even attempt to permit. So once the use variance is in play, then I'll be back with the site plan approval that shows all of the individual structures as well as the road. Could you mind going back to the, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yep, please?
Jill, how many units were you proposing?
Okay, so we would propose 57 of tradition, 57 fair market, nine...
So are the nine...
Yep.
How many of the lots would they take? If you can go back, it's like it's all only lot one.
What he means, under a conventional plan. So can you go back to conventional? Yeah, I can figure it out. It would take about two and a half?
Okay.
Yeah. So about 90,000 square feet.
So this is what's by right?
Yeah.
Well, by special permit and subdivision approval.
Yeah. But again, it's a special permit for the two-family homes, which if I show that we have double the square footage and sufficient frontage, that's what the board...
And that's, that's 30 units?
It's actually 32.
32, okay.
That's, it was, I apologize. That was, that was me. It was supposed to be for 16 lots. Chris had given me the wrong plan, and I, I included it. Yeah, we were, that was the day when I had all those plans delivered to the office. So that was my mistake. And then when I finally realized that it was, you know, not the 16, because here's the 16.
And with the 32, are there any affordables included in that, or are you...
No, no.
So it's just straight 32?
Yeah. And the traditional's just straight 32. We're not looking for any, I mean, we wouldn't look for any density in this particular one. No.
But it is really just 16 units by right. And that, there is a big difference between required special permit and...
Oh, I know there was a difference, but Middleton, I've been practicing here for I can't tell you how long, the only requirement for two families on a 40,000 square foot lot in an R1 district is showing that you have 40,000 square feet. That's the only, that's the only thing.
But we've never had a development of this many duplexes at once, and there's traffic impacts, and they do have to meet the criteria under special permits, under Section 9.4.
And again, you, you do meet them because the way in which we...
Well, it's just different than it's always been.
It is, absolutely. I still have to come to you so you make sure I do the, I mean, I'm going to have to do a traffic study no matter what, even though it's a small, I mean, it's a small impact, but it's an impact, so I have to do it.
I think the point is, you, this is possible. This is possible without a variance.
Yes, absolutely. This is, this is, this would be, without a variance, this will be what we would develop, basically. You know, will there be changes? Of course, there'll be changes. You know how it is. You'll, maybe we want to move something around. Maybe you'll ask me to do something. There'll be changes. But this would be, if we don't, if the Board of Appeals doesn't grant the use variance, then this would be what we would, we would end up developing. I'm hoping for a use variance because, you know, I think it's a better use of the particular property for 55 and older than I do for traditional homes. But either way, it's appropriate for the land.
So how far would the entry drive, the entry road be from Boston Street?
It's far. It's like over 500 feet. It's far. That's a long stretch. It's about 500 feet that runs along Angelicus. That's what makes it so odd, is that particular way the lot comes in. Yeah, you can't really tell that well from that. Yeah, it's, it's not a good, it's not a good attempt.
How close is it to the parking lot? Is it, is it pretty tied up against the Angelica park?
It abuts it. Yes, yes.
Can you anticipate this can be viewed from St. Agnes?
Um, so can you pull, can you like reduce it again? No, go to that overhead, would you mind?
St. Agnes is right down below...
It is, but if you go to the overhead, I can really show them. Okay. So here's, here's where the property is. Oh, oh. So here's where the property is. Here's the entrance right here.
It's St. Agnes right there.
It's St. Agnes. Isn't it St. Agnes right there?
Yeah, yeah, it's it.
Yeah. And that's the other thing, is with St. Agnes, they have asked, are you still talking to them?
Yeah, Roger from the Finance Committee, he comes every month. They're trying to decide, and I'm not supposed to really talk a lot about what they're trying to do.
All right.
So I won't get into it, but they're trying to make decisions about what they want to do between Charfield and Middleton, because they're overwhelmed or overpopulated here, and they're trying to get the two parishes to see how they could fit together to do one. So they may sell this. They don't know what they're doing. So they come and see me every month, talk about it. Ray, where are you with, you know, so we can either fit them in or somehow if we can or can't, or...
Is there some cooperation, like somewhere out on, in the ether on that?
It could be, depending on what they, what they decide. I can't make a decision for them, and they're talking to their parishioners, so I really don't have those answers. But yes, they are, we're willing to cooperate if there's, if there's availability to do that with the land.
Are you planning on access from Boston?
Not, no, no. To a drive-thru? No. I mean, everybody would cut through if we did that.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no. It was a thought at one point, and we, we nixed it.
We, we, if, if we were to provide access from Boston Street, you know, we would maybe give it for like emergency vehicles, allow them to park.
That's a problem.
Yeah, cut through, yeah.
Anybody who lives in, off of Boston Street, anybody is going, would use it, which is why we can't.
They were talking about, and it was talking about cut through, but then afterwards, the sale of that property, and would we be interested, and how would it fit? But I, it's not for me really to say because they're still working with their parishioners and their...
I just, I, whatever, I mean, my opinion is...
Yeah, no, we...
It cannot, if, if there was access, it would have to be like gated, yeah, gated restrictive emergency kind of access.
And that's the only thing we've ever talked about is, is that as well.
Well, they were looking for additional parking, is how it came up. Well, they were looking for additional parking, is how it came about.
Yeah.
Well, but then, we would allow parking, but then there would have to be some sort of a, you know, you'd have to still block, so that you couldn't go from the parking lot through.
Right.
There's still, you would know well through traffic, essentially.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just like, you know, how people always want to cut through Pleasant Street, you know, how it says it's a one-way, but it's not, you know, do not enter? I mean, that's just done, so people won't cut through.
Why shouldn't I just... Did you say it's not really a one-way?
It's not a one-way, no.
Yeah, so if they did need, we were talking about additional parking for them, to provide it, but not egress.
Well, just, I mean, if you, just kind of down the road, if you, if you, you know, if there is an acquisition at some point down the road, if, you know...
Yeah, we could make an emergency access.
Yeah, we just want to avoid, I mean, I would...
Gated, it could be gated, just...
That would be ugly.
Yeah.
That would be ugly for the people if that would live in that.
For the people who would get purchases.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, if people cut, it would be, it would be bad.
Yeah, okay.
It's not proposed.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you're not, you're not pursuing definitive subdivision approval for the proposed roadway for, for this development, right?
No.
It's going to be a private way, but how, how are you going to work a maintenance agreement between Housing Authority and private owners?
It's quite possible to do a subdivision road, just to end in front of the, in front of the Housing Authority area. I may end up doing that, we're still contemplating it.
So that it's accepted by the town?
So that it'll come in, and it'll be two lots. Because I have to create two lots, but I don't think that we will end up conveying that. I think we'll still just maintain it privately.
Between, and their share, maintenance of it?
Yeah. So, basically, so the question, right? How are you going to, I have to create two lots. So, I can create lots without frontage, but then it requires another variance, and it seems kind of foolish, because I have to, no matter what, develop a decent road. So, this, no matter what I probably do, I'm probably going to come into you with a, a definitive plan, to come in and show a definitive, to cut it into two lots.
See, I think that's a good thing, because I think at some point, I don't know, I just, I just foresee the town making this a public way, if there's Housing Authority units at the end.
Again, Peachy Circle's not, so if they wanted to make it a public way, I suppose you can, but I, I mean, because the road's still within, the condominium would not be. That's something, you know, we can discuss with the Board of Selectmen, and I, I, the Housing Authority hasn't even agreed to, I mean, they, this is something that's still up in the air. I mean, I would love to be able to give it to Middleton, and have Middleton be able to oversee it, because it'd be nice to have residents here, have something like that.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of demand for it. But, you know, no matter what, we would be giving, nine affordable units in some fashion.
Another bonus you, you mentioned is that you're going to try and permit a walkway between this property.
We're not sure how to do it yet, because I think that this is completely wet.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do anything, but we would propose to have, you know, something like, you know, along the outskirts, so that people can connect. The issue is, you know, like here, I think this is still Rich Sockelo's property.
Yeah.
You know, Lewis? So, I'm uncertain of how, if, if there's a possibility of trying to get something so people can come through. We'd love to be able to, because it would be...
Yeah, and I did talk to him, I'm sorry to keep intervening, so I did talk to him about connection, if we need...
Yeah.
Any egress. Not, I don't know if it was roadway so much, but if we needed...
Just a trail.
Utility or trail, he should be willing to work with us.
I think Rich is...
He called me on it, he called me about it, so I said, yeah, it would be, not a problem.
I mean, it would be, our intent is to try and, and create a trail, so that you can have walking, because what's really nice is that, you know, the reservoir's right over here, you know, you have downtown, and you can't walk anywhere half the time in Middleton, it's a walkway to nowhere.
And as you know, you're going to be buying the municipal golf course, and that's going to be all open space back in that area, too.
You might be able to connect all the way through, I'm, I'm not sure.
Rich is, you can, in the very, very back.
In the, yeah, I think if you stay along the wetlands, you can.
I did just have a quick conversation with Kristin Kent, the Conservation Agent, about a possibility of one of those swamp walks. You've heard about the swamp walk in Danvers, where it's, it's over, it's a wooden walkway built over a swamp.
Oh, I've seen that.
About that, yes.
I know.
They do that in Wakefield, it'd be real true.
It, it, it would be a wonderful thing. That sounds easy to me, that's good.
A drainage area that goes behind my condo and through Pond, Punchards Brook.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is the water...
Are you opposed to having a swamp walk over it?
No, I would love that, but there is, you know, assuming Fuller Pond would get on board, and I don't have any official relationship with them, the woods behind our house, our condo goes all the way, there's, there's like a farm, there's a few cows, then you're talking going down towards the dump.
Yeah.
And, there's not been a lot of official documentation of Punchards Brook, but it is, you know, a real brook, and I've never seen it, you know, dry.
Definitely one of our streams.
Right.
It's wonderful, I mean, if you could hook up, because behind you actually comes all the way down. Like, I can walk to your, your condo from my subdivision, like, come out, go down meager, come out, and there's this big access way, and I can walk all the way down.
Right, right, it gets very thin right behind my condo.
I think it's just...
But, the thinnest it is, is about twenty or thirty yards of woodland, and I know that's, that's, that's the pinch point.
Right.
A lot, a lot of that is dry, it's not, so when they say wetlands...
It's boarding vegetative wetlands.
Yeah, so, I mean, you could have trails going through it, it's not, it doesn't flood, you know, it's not a, a totally wet swamp, you know?
We definitely are contemplating trails. I mean, that was one of the big things that we wanted to try and provide for the community were trails. That was one of the aspects of it. So, I definitely, I had no idea you could do a, a, Ray's...
She didn't say we could do it, I'm just, I was just raising that, because I would love to see that connection, and open to the public, too, so, because that becomes an amenity, it's a quality of life thing for other residents, that it gets them off the road, although I know Boston Street has sidewalks, 114 does too, right?
Yeah, Boston Street sidewalk stops, though, like, almost a half a mile before the bike trail. I don't know why we don't go all the way. You stop at Wildwood, and then you don't go down, it makes no sense.
But, there's woods all the way down to the dump.
Oh, yeah.
Behind Fuller Pond, and it, and that, you know, depending, we'll take a lot of agreements, but...
Wonderful to be able to make a way through.
But, it certainly could be done without impinging on anybody's property, right?
This could, if we could actually do, if you, we could actually create the wetland trail in any fashion, we connect with the golf course, we can. We can. I, I'll talk, I definitely, that's food for thought, I had no idea you'd do that, so yeah, I will talk to Kristin. That was something we considered.
Yeah.
But anyways, so, so this is why we're looking for use variance, a couple of reasons. You know what? This particular type of a subdivision, if you will, are complex, places absolutely no burden on the infrastructure at all. I mean, there's always the talk about, you know, whether or not we're burdening the schools. Believe it or not, when we do our school assessments, and I was, I've been on a couple of space needs committees for the schools, both at Masco and at the elementary school, and we contemplate the full development of all open space. So, our schools can handle the capacity, but our, our pocketbook maybe, you know, strains a little bit when we add a lot of people at one time. But, it can handle it, it can. All this does, though, is add to the tax base without any of that burden, because that's what fifty-five and elders do, that's why they're so in vogue in many communities, and why they would love people to come and develop that type of property, because it's all taxes and no burden. So, that is one of the reasons why we're seeking to actually do a fifty-five and older subdivision of this particular property. And it obviously is awfully strange-looking property, with the, you know, tail going out to 114, and it debuts, you know, Angelicus. And, that's what we're basically staying, is our unique condition, and its location is absolutely perfect for something like this, for something where you have an older community.
In a downtown village, I mean, instead of single-family homes or duplex, I mean, this fits with downtown, I think, a little better, in terms of a village.
Well, it's just like Peach, you know, if you go and you look at Peachy Circle, this is very similar to Peachy Circle, and everybody's like, oh, my God, it's such high density. Peachy Circle has seven acres, and it has thirty-five units on it. That's dense. I, it's just, it, Cobblestone has, you know, every, every one of the, our fifty-five and elders has a, a lot of density, and the only one that doesn't have affordable, I believe, is Cobblestone or Peachy. That's the one, right? That's the only one that doesn't have affordability, I believe in it.
Which one, say it again?
Cobblestone, the one that's right near the transfer station. That one has no affordability.
So, of the twenty-three plus acres, how much is not wetland, or...
Um, fourteen acres? Fourteen?
It's fourteen, I think.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's roughly twice the size of Peachy.
Oh, yeah.
Or builtable space.
Yes, yeah. Peachy has some wellhead on it, but I don't think it's excessive. I, I, honestly, I don't know the answer to that one, but yeah, it is. And then, another one is, you know, even Conway Maple, it has five, five acres, and it has twenty-six units on it. I, it, you know, you look all over Middleton, where we have affordable component, or some sort of, um, how do you say, I got, I don't know what language. When you give an extra benefit to the town in some fashion, like affordable, or you give them the, the trails, or you're doing something that is actually outside of the norm, yeah, people, the way you get it is because of density. That's how people can afford to do it, and that's what, it motivates them.
So, so at this point, you, they have been, they are asking the ZBA for a variance and site plan approval, however, they have not submitted any of the site plan approval. I think I explained that in the staff report. So, I just wanted to make clear that you will get another bite at it.
I'll get it.
If they receive their variance, they will then work on more detailed site plans, if the ZBA approves that. The ZBA may want more detailed site plans to make a decision on the variance, I don't know. But, you will get a shot at making a recommendation at that point.
After, after the ZBA?
Oh, yeah.
No, well, before they make their decision, they just, they just have not submitted a site plan.
You will get another shot.
After, after the site plan's been...
After, no, or after the...
After the variance.
So, once the use variance is voted on, I will be back.
So, have, have you guys spoken outside of the church with any of the abutters?
No, not yet. We have not. Once I think we're better in, better able to discuss what the actual development will be, we will. I mean, this particular property, you know, like, what can I do in a, in a traditional sense? I can build fifteen, it's, it's a fifteen-foot setback in this particular area, it's a very tight line. We're proposing always double that, so we're providing buffer, we're provide, we're trying not to cut down trees in the back, so what we'd like to do is create a natural vegetative tree line, and we're going to work on that. This is simply, to be quite frank, we showed you the most dense development that we, we